Oh, yours.
Okay, well, welcome. This is the City of Flemish Planning Commission meeting. Call to order. Can we start with a roll call, please?
We can. Peggy Yoder.
Here.
Ben Hutzaker.
Here.
Joseph Sullivan. Darlene Rose.
Here.
Chair Gary Connor.
Here.
So it looks like Yan is coming in right now. So we'll go from staff. You've got City Councilor Ruth Kazi.
Here.
And Chris Workman, City Manager, and Gianna Bernardino. And is present.
So that was just roll call Gianna. So we just started. And I want to start off by welcoming our newest member, Darlene Rose.
Thank you.
Do you want to introduce yourself or say anything?
Um, well, no, not really. I mean, I I'm a longtime Flemish person. While I was away for twenty few years, I worked with ODOT and TRIMAT and and I have a civil engineering degree from OSU, compliments of the Clemens Foundation. So, you know, this is, this is my world. I'm really happy to be back. And this, I think this is going to be a fun, fun way to get to know more about my city.
Okay. Welcome. I'm glad to have another civil engineering grad on the OS from OSU on the, on the planning commission because I am too.
Very good.
So this is the first meeting of the year after the appointment of a new member. So it is, we're supposed to elect a chair for the year that didn't make the agenda. But would anyone like to make a motion that we add that to the beginning of the agenda to elect Chair and Vice Chair?
Sure, I'll make a motion.
Second motion.
Okay. Are there any nominations for Chair?
Did, did we vote on that?
Oh, I, I'm sorry. I just, I, I got ahead of myself. Foregone conclusion. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
That was a unanimous with six commission members present. So now are there any nominations? For Chair?
Well, if, if you're willing, I would like to nominate our current Chair, Gary Connor.
I would accept the nomination.
Does anybody else want it?
Gary, I think you've been doing a great job.
Thanks. I appreciate the vote of confidence. Um, is anyone willing to remain as Vice Chair or nominate someone else as Vice Chair?
Did we vote on you?
Um.
Or do we, we just not, I just nominated you.
Yeah, I suppose we should vote on me first. But I guess before we do, I would say, are there any other nominations?
Right. Yeah, that's appropriate.
Okay, well, I guess we can vote then. We're Chair, and even though it's, I guess everybody can vote no, right? Not quite sure. This is strange territory. So all in favor of me continuing on as the Chair. Raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Gary, I'm, I'm in favor, but just kind of a point of order. I, I believe our rules require a ballot vote. Is that maybe Mr. Workman can confirm or deny that?
Oh, yeah. Thank you for, yeah, I'm clearly not on the top of my game tonight at all.
No, you're fine. Ballot doesn't signify it has to be paper ballot. It could be an oral ballot or verbal. So if anybody requests, we can do paper ballot. But if everybody's okay with the verbal, we just proceed.
Okay, not hearing any objections, not having alternate nominations, I guess that, that made sense. So is anyone interested in being in Vice Chair or nominating someone or Joseph, you interested in remaining?
I'm happy to remain as Vice Chair. That's acceptable to rest of committee.
Well, I'll move that Joseph is for the Vice Chair then.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor of Joseph as Vice Chair of the City of Flemish Planning Commission?
Aye.
Again, unanimous. All right. Thank you. Our, our first, or I guess our second order of business then is the approval of minutes from December twentieth. You have the minutes in your packet. Are there any comments?
Well, I'm doing all the talking. So I, I didn't have any changes, but I'd have moved to approve the minutes from December twentieth.
Is there a second?
One second.
Is there any discussion or comments on the minutes? Counselor Kazi.
May I just provide two technical corrections?
Yes.
Both on page one, line forty-three, Commissioner Yoder discussed the planning commissions, I believe. If the implication there is commissions, not commissioners, would you agree, Peggy?
Yes.
Okay, and on line forty-nine, how and when they can provide input, just insert word provide rather than input.
Oh, oh, right.
Okay. I'll take that as a motion that the that the minutes be amended.
I don't think I could make motion.
You're right.
Those are just, we could just consider scripners corrections and we can do that.
Yeah, of course.
And as, as the maker of the motion, I'm fine with the changes.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of adoption approval of the minutes as amended. Raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Gianna, did you abstain or?
I'm sorry. No, I was distracted. I'm sorry. Yes, aye for the minute.
Well, I, it was of interest to me that I read in a little, the little packet that I believe, did everyone get the manual on city advisor committees? Silence is accepted as a, as an aye, so.
Yeah, that was interesting.
I did not know that.
Me neither.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Uh, yeah, I was just curious before we start the public hearing portion, if we knew how many people had signed up to comment.
We didn't have anybody sign up ahead of time to comment tonight at the public hearing.
And is there anybody on the, on the Zoom call that?
There's not.
And no one submitted any written comments either, I believe.
No.
Okay. Before we move on that, with that, so this packet that we did get, is, is this completely brand new? It says it was updated last week.
It's got some information that we used to provide in the new packets for orientation, but it's like ninety percent new. It's
Where's the old?
Pulling it together. Well, it was varying information depending on which committee or which commission or council you were joining. We had little insights and recommendations from City Recorder and that sort of bit, depending on what committee we're on, and we felt it was better just to pull it all together and make it more user friendly for everybody and each of the committees that all get the same packet.
Oh, so this is a first timer.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we probably shouldn't say it's updated. Because I thought the same thing that Gary did. It's like, well, I did a search for it, couldn't find it on the city website. And usually when you update something, there's an old one. But apparently there really isn't an old one.
No, I think the importance of the update, there was the date stamp it for last week. So we know when it was created. So we could put a created date instead of updated date.
Yeah, that would probably be better.
I think so, too.
Um, and one, one other thing I wanted to note in here is that it talks about in the minutes noting how the previous, when, when minutes are adopted, noting in the minutes for this meeting, what was changed in those minutes. And I hadn't seen any of that before. And I don't know that, like, the, the kind of corrections we had this time were relevant, but I, I think there've been a few that probably at least should be noted of significance in the past. So just to comment about keeping our minutes. So I guess we can move on to the public hearing. We'll start off by reviewing the case title and the summary provided by the staff and the, the script I have says that's by me. Chris, is it the intent that I would just kind of summarize this in my own words, not read it in entirety, I don't suppose?
Um, well, the case title and summary provided by staff would be, excuse me, essentially just the one or two sentences. Probably the introductory ones in the, in the staff report would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Paragraph.
Okay. So I guess I'll start off by saying this public hearing is, is regarding amendments to the comprehensive plan for chapter one, citizen involvement. And that the planning commission has been asked to review and update the chapter one of the comprehensive plan for citizen involvement, and that we're going to hold this public hearing. And we'll make a recommendation to the City Council for consideration of our proposed chapter update. And I'll add that there will be a follow-on public hearing at the City Council, prayer to their deliberations as well. And that this chapter is, is a complete rewrite of the original information, the comprehensive plan regarding citizen involvement. And it's being done to bring us up to date with Oregon State Code requirements. And we had previous meetings discussing some of these chapters from similar sized cities and how they approached the topic. And we picked and chose a number of sections from the examples that we have on hand, as long as, as well as a few of our own amendments. And that what we're trying to achieve is a number of specific goals, and these are listed as the opportunities for widespread public involvement. Effective two-way communication with the public ability for the public to be involved in all phases of the planning process, make the technical information easily understood. And provide feedback mechanisms for policymakers to respond to that public input and provide for adequate financial support to enable public involvement efforts. With that, our, our proceedings tonight are going to start with a staff report. We would have had public testimony, but there is none. Then we're going to ask questions of staff and deliberate and make a final decision. And then that will conclude the public hearing portion before we go on to a staff update and adjournment. So Mr. Workman, would you like to start us off with a staff update?
I can. Thank you.
Staff report.
Yes, so Commissioners Friday, uh, just an agenda and summary, talking through this process a little bit, as Gary had mentioned. The state goal one, the state's goal one has a number of requirements for citizen involvement.
Chris, I'm, I'm really sorry. I'm gonna have to put in here, but I just want to make sure that we're also following through in terms of our legally required statements of whether or not there's any conflicts of interest or anything like that. I apologize for that.
And I apologize as well. So is it important to read the parts about the public hearing being open and closed since there is no public?
Yes, because this is still a public hearing.
Okay, so the public hearing is now open. Does any commissioner wish to declare any potential or actual conflicts of interest? And does anyone wish to rebut the lack of declarations of conflict? And are there any objections on jurisdictional grounds, meaning the planning commission is not the appropriate body for this hearing? And I guess I would, since, since we have a number of these to do, I, I would like to hear from our city attorney, what sort of conflicts of interest there could possibly be with regards to comprehensive plan updates, very generic topics like this?
So it's more so just for the legal requirements to be met. For instance, if there were changes specifically within here that a person had gone through and looked at the packet and found that the changes might be being done because there's interest in some way or another, not necessarily for a change to this citizen involvement committee, but let's say, for instance, we are changing it. So we're making a whole, going, the planning commission was intending to create a whole body for a citizen. The Committee for Citizen Involvement, instead of just keeping it within the planning commission, potentially, some people might say that there are conflicts of interest or something like that. So it's, it's more so just as a basic way to cover and make sure that we've done any disclosures. Because under the Oregon Public Hearing and Public Meeting laws, some disclosures are mandatory that the counselors or commissioners in the public hearings and meetings would have to make themselves. So we have to just make sure that everyone has an opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Comprehensive plan update decisions such as this case under consideration are evaluated against applicable statewide planning goals and guidelines and criteria from the land development code and comprehensive plan as presented in the staff report. Now we can proceed with the staff report.
Thank you. So again, just a little more background. In, in 2020, City began preparations to update major portions of the comprehensive plan by drafting and adopting a housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis, and a Main Street Plan. In addition to updating the policies derived from these documents, the City Council directed the planning commission to also update chapter one of the comprehensive plan, citizen involvement. So the sort of the planning commission reviewed samples from other cities over the past couple of months and has put together new language for this chapter. The staff report looks at the there has a list of findings there. And so we'll want to make sure that we look at those findings and address those, make sure the planning commissions and accord or is in concurrence with those. But really, we're looking at Flemish municipal code eighteen one oh five, which talks about the process to go through for updating the plan. Flemish code eighteen one oh five talks about decision-making considerations to be made, specifically the statewide planning goals. And so the staff report looks at each of the statewide planning goals, goal one for citizen involvement, and makes sure that the proposed language being presented is going to meet the state's requirements. And the staff report concludes that this language, in fact, does meet state's requirements for what's going to be required. And then the other criteria is to look at the comprehensive plan itself. There's some language in the conference plan, talks about how to update the conference of plan. We followed that procedure. And so again, the conclusion is that that this does meet the criteria set forth in the comprehensive plan for updates. And then the last one is again, just processed through the municipal code on, on a type four legislative hearing, which we're starting with this public hearing tonight. And the conclusion from the staff report is that by following the process and putting out the notifications, excuse me, that we have, we, we are or will be meeting the criteria that set forth in the municipal code for updating the conference plan, which is a type four legislative hearing process, which we're again going through this evening. So the summary on page three or the conclusion on page three of the staff report is that the city has not updated chapter one of the conference plan since the plans are in adoption. The city is following its public hearing process and considering these amendments, including first reviewing these amendments at the planning commission level and an anticipated recommendation from the commission to the City Council, followed by a public hearing at the City Council eleven, level, and then further consideration. So again, the, the job, the, the role of staff report is to look at the criteria and make sure that we follow all the steps and we meet that criteria. And again, my conclusion is that, that we have followed it and are following it and that the, if, if adopted as presented, we will be in compliance with the state requirements as well as our own city requirements. With that, I'll conclude my report. I'm happy to answer any questions now or I can answer questions during deliberation as well.
Do we have any kind of overriding process or framework type questions of city staff?
Yeah, thank you, Chris.
Okay. So at this point, we would have the city attorney describe some issues around public testimony and then can go through the public testimony and ask any questions of those providing testimony. It seems to me we're free to just skip through that.
So I just to, again, cut in, kind of clarify, the, the applicable criteria also applies to the city, since this is the city's application. So it's also just a reminder to make sure that all of the commissioners are aware that when we're looking at this application for its approval or not, yes, you guys did help draft it and work into what's going to be in there. But again, it's just making sure that we're hitting all those criteria. So that's another reason why I'm doing it, even though there's no public members here.
Great, great.
Right. So at this time, anyone testifying, so including the city, should direct their testimony towards the applicable criteria of the case or other criteria in the municipal code concert comprehensive plan or land development code, which you believe to apply to the code amendments, to the amendments to this code. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city or other parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes an appeal to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue.
And I think the next thing here that's pertinent is regarding continuance or holding the record open. And commission members can do that as well as the public. Is that correct?
If I I believe you can, if you wanted to, it wouldn't be necessarily continuance. What you would do is you would table the discussion for the next meeting. So it would be, it's the same thing you'd be requesting that there, you would be stopping the meeting and bringing it over to the next time. It's different in terms of a continuance, whether or not the record is held open or not. That's more for the public. But for if the commissioners themselves decided that they couldn't get to a resolution tonight, you can table it and then bring it up at the next meeting.
Okay. Very good. So.
Gary, just for purposes of the hearing, and so we can make record, we'll just note for the record that the city did not receive any public comment prior to the hearing, nor did the city receive any request to provide oral testimony for this evening's public hearing.
Okay. So with that, I think we can close the public hearing unless I'm missing something.
If there's any other questions for staff about the staff report or anything like that, this would be a good time to ask if there's any clarifications we want. If not, we can just go ahead and enter deliberations. And you'd close the public hearing.
My script has closing the public hearing before those additional questions, but.
I apologize that, that you can also ask them during deliberations, but in terms of it, there are steps to that you can take as well like that, because again, it's the city's presentation for their, of their petition to amend the comprehensive plan.
Okay, okay. So I guess we can just go then into detailed questions.
Of right. So you can click, you can either enter deliberations and close the public hearing, or you can also continue to ask, Chris, some questions and then close the public hearing and then enter deliberations. There's nothing preventing you from asking Chris additional questions during deliberations based on
Okay.
the criteria.
Well, then I, I like getting things out of the way and out of my mind. So with that, I think we will close the public hearing officially. And we will enter deliberations and questions of city staff if anyone has those. Counselor Kazi.
Once again, that technical questions. Line thirty-eight and thirty-nine on page one referred to the Citizen Advisory Committee and the Citizens Advisory Committee. Just wanted to check with staff to see if it should be singular or plural.
Leave it singular, Citizen Advisory.
Thank you.
Well, I, I guess this isn't only just to ask of staff is, can we comment on? You know, what's in here?
I think we're, we're free to make any comments, deliberate, ask cities staff questions or make motions. So feel free.
Okay, I, can I make a couple of comments?
Yes.
Okay, on, on the second page, the first one through thirteen. The only thing I would suggest we do, just because in a, I'm suggesting that we flip bullet three with bullet two, because it's just in a kind of a chronological order, in my mind, anyway. It seems to flow better. And if that's no big deal. And then just below that, on item fifteen, take off the W for going going forward.
Yeah.
I'm gonna butt in again super quickly. So just in terms of a, the, the process, the technical process, I think when we're gonna start making the amendments to this, I think we probably need to have the motion on the table first and then make amendments to passing the, what's, what's been presented in the staff report. So it would be a, I make a motion to, if you look on the staff report page where it has the suggested motion, you can have that motion and then you would do motions to amend what's there.
Oh, oh, you mean you, you wanted a motion to adopt it?
Right. And then, then you can start the deliberations about amending it. And then it's the more formal of, it's like when you're amending minutes, you have to do a motion to amend the minutes. So the emotion would be I move to adopt minutes or, and then I move to amend. Yes or no? And that way we can just adopt those amendments as they're presented versus having a motion at the very end that says I move to adopt what's on the, what's been presented with the following changes. Because if we can kind of just keep that in there for the recorder, that might be an easier way for them to do that.
Yeah, and it's this one pager kind of summary on the backside. There's the written motions.
Right.
If somebody wants to, you know, if somebody wants to just ask general questions, we can do that, but you can ask them afterwards, too. So if we get this out of the way, we can just have the motion on the floor and then make proposed amendments.
Well, I guess I'll go ahead and do that. I move that the planning commission adopt the findings presented in the staff report dated January twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, PC twenty-one dash thirteen to amend the comprehensive plan and recommend an amending ordinance be considered approved by the City Council.
Commissioner Bernardino. Is that a, were you seconding the motion? Okay, thank you.
And now you can make your motion to amend.
Okay. Now I don't know if I want to. Well.
And I don't believe you're tired of talking yet.
Well, yeah, I won't say nothing now. Yeah. Okay, well. I'm, I, in a way, I'd want to do these kind of one at a time, because if I go through and ask, suggest five different things and two of them, somebody doesn't want. But it does seem like a lot of motions, but.
Well. Well.
You can also kind of get a sense of if it's gonna be unanimous or not before you make the motion to when you're in deliberations, if that's helpful as well. So the typos and like, you can probably do all of those in one swift uh go and then it should be fine. If not, then you can just say move to amend this, or there can also be scripters errors that you can be amending as well.
Yeah.
So, can I have a clarification? You know, because I think, I think some of us are, you know, I know I have a couple of things that I have questions on and it may or may not uh change the wording. That's in the document, um so if I say something like that and then Gianna says something and Van says something. Are you saying that we will be accepting the amendments all in one final swoop? Or that we're going to accept amendments, amendments at each and every time?
So when a motion to uh that presents amendments is put up forward, that's what those motions in that, or sorry, those amendments in that motion are what's on the table. So for instance, if uh Commissioner Van uh Hunsaker wanted to go ahead and go back to where we're looking at. Uh was that page two? I believe, yeah, so he can make all of those uh motions to, that all of those amendments in one motion. They can be voted on all at once and then you could move on to the next uh amendments that you'd like to make.
Great, thank you.
So Van, if you have a little list of, of simple ones you'd like to propose, I think we could vote on those and even. You know, we can make amendments later that make changes, might as well go forward with those ones that are easy right now.
Okay, well, alright, so I'll make the motion that on page two. Line, well, line three or paragraph three and two. Be swapped, the three put in two and two put in three. And just for purposes of. Chronicological order and then to remove the W on line fifteen and going. On that page, that's all I had.
Is there a second for that motion?
I can second it. I still, I have a question about the, some of what he had just said, but. I can second it and then we can discuss.
Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, my question is line seven. And I would just like a clarification on the number of non-required citizen involvement events.
Can I pause you right there?
Yeah.
His, his um proposal to swap the order of those wouldn't be affected by any of the language there, even if you wanted to delete the whole thing, so. So we could, if, if you're fine with that, we could just vote on it and then.
Okay, that's fine.
And then move on to your question.
Okay, that's going to.
So I guess I'll, I'll ask for a vote. All in favor of the amendment to rearrange the order of bullet two and three and remove the W in favor? I, unanimous? Commissioner Yoder, what do you want to say about number two there? That's now number three.
Okay, line seven. The old line seven, number of non-required citizen involvement events. I was wondering um what, what would that be and if um. I can't think of a time that we've had a required citizen involvement event. I don't, I would just like a clarification of that. I don't know what that means. Like, I would like an example.
Mr. Workman.
So an example of a required citizen involvement event would be like tonight's public hearing. So it's a requirement to have this public hearing, so a, a non-required citizen involvement event would be something other than. A public hearing that's required for land use decision, so a table at the farmer's market or something like that that was not required by the code for any type of change.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I also just want to jump in and make sure that we catch uh councillor Cossey's amendments as well when we're going through and making amendments. Uh with respect to the pluralization of the citizens online uh.
Oh yeah, yeah, would have been good to add that into yours, man.
Yeah.
But we'll catch it on the next bit. I have um. I'll entertain big issues too, so whatever you have. So I think Peggy, you had your hand up first, but.
Okay, line uh twenty-one and twenty-two. As Bologna develops and grows, it will inherently become more diverse in regards to age, income, language, abilities, ethnicity, et cetera. I was just wondering if that language really needs to be in there. It just seems like it's just kind of sticking out.
Sorry, Commissioner, what page were you on?
Um page two. Line twenty-one and twenty-two.
Peggy, I don't disagree with you, but if you wanted to state. Things to the motion, it would give us a definite thing to discuss, just to talk.
We, we can, we can discuss it too, though, I mean, I, I, I felt like that sentence popped out a little bit too. And, and it, and it doesn't really have a point.
Right.
Um other than predicting the future, which is. Often difficult to do. Maybe we could change the previous sentence to just include. An accountable involvement methods that. That are effective to reach. Diverse group regardless of age, income, language, abilities, ethnicity, et cetera, just to. So I think it belongs in that paragraph to say that we're trying to accomplish reaching people regardless of those issues. But the sentence really doesn't say anything grammatically. Commissioner Bernadini.
Um to me, that sentence makes sense, given the sentence that precedes it. I think those. It's. Uh it explains. Why we're utilizing inclusionary collaborative accessible and accountable involvement method.
Yeah, I, I think we understand that. I, I just think it's stronger language if it explicitly says in order to reach. The population regardless of.
You know, and. And I know that I think the wording did was already in the Monroe one and they, they had it like that. But I think, I, I think it was Gary that said, you know, it's kind of uh looking at the future. I mean. We don't know how diverse it's going to be. It could be just a bunch of Caucasians. Moving in, what's, you know, um I don't know, I, it, it, it doesn't make that big a deal to me. I just thought it, it, it just didn't, it wasn't really saying anything, um. So I just didn't see that it really necessarily had to be in there, but if anybody else, you know, other people feel strongly to keep it in, I'm fine with that too.
Commissioner Bernadini.
I think I do like it and I, I do think it makes sense specifically because this paragraph. This section is called going forward, so it's, that's the whole point of it is let's look at the future of the town. And I, and I do think that it's a safe bet to assume that as Falaumit develops and grows, it will become more diverse. In regards to age, income, all of these things, right? Simply because that is. It would be weird if it didn't, let's put it that way.
Yeah.
The rest, the country is increasing, you know, the more you grow, the more people come in. Presumably, the town will become more diverse rather than less.
Counselor Causey.
I'm just wondering if it would make sense to move the last sentence. To become the second sentence of the paragraph. So it would read a great deal has changed. And then as Blemm of. Continues to develop and grow. It will inherently become more diverse in regard to age, income, language, abilities, ethnicity, et cetera.
It does make, that does flow better.
Yeah, like that, but.
Better writing.
And if I was writing it all by myself, I would say it is expected to become more diverse.
Yeah.
Yeah, inherently, it's kind of a weird word.
Yeah. So, motion?
Someone else will have to take over.
Yeah, we, we need a motion from somebody who's on the planning commission.
Mr. Yoder, you got this one.
Okay, I move that we make the changes that we previously discussed. About, about the wording. I can reread the whole thing if you would rather. Or we can say the last sentence on line of page two of line twenty-one, twenty-two. Be put on line eighteen before going forward. And also to change the wording from it will inherently. On line twenty, twenty-one to it is expected to become more diverse.
Perfect, very well put.
Good job.
Second.
A second.
Thank you. Uh all in favor? I.
I.
In unanimous? Uh Commissioner Bernadini.
Um right below that, did somebody already point out that citizen involvement program needs to be capitalized just for consistency? Line twenty-four on that same page.
Okay. Well, can you make a motion to, to fix that?
I'm gonna, yeah, and the pluralization on page one.
Yeah.
I also have a question, if I may, on page one of four.
Yeah.
Um line fifteen, the Fulhamith planning official coordinates a number of robbery block. Uh who, who is, is that Mr. Beba? Who is this planning official?
Um I serve as the planning official for the city. I serve as the planning official, the city manager.
Okay, you're, is that? Okay.
It's, it's under my responsibilities as city manager.
To be a planning official, alright. I'd also at this point like to throw in one more plug for. Universal numbering of page numbering of our planning commission packets.
One, rather than one, rather than starting at one on each page?
Rather, because we have lines that start at one, I'm, yeah. It would make it a lot easier if we all knew what page we were all on, just saying.
So I, I would, it would be nice if someone would make a motion to um make those two corrections that um Gianna was just discussing.
On page two?
The, the one on page two and then the pluralization of citizens on page one.
That would be lot, page one, line thirty-nine.
Singular, not plural.
Right.
I would do it, but I wasn't sure what was the suggestion on uh page two.
What was it again? Gi- Gianna, why don't you make the motion?
I make a motion on page two of four, line twenty-four. Capitalize citizen involvement program, really hardly warrants a motion, okay.
We're gonna do it right.
That's right. Just for consistency sake and on page one of four, line thirty.
Nine.
Nine, the word citizens should be singular citizen, is that right, Ruth?
Yeah, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? I.
I.
Unanimous. Uh do we have anything else on page one or two? Um Mr. Workman.
Chair Connor, I just need to, I need to excuse myself for a prior commitment I've got, so I'm gonna leave you and Chair Connor and uh. And Attorney Pratt's capable hands, so excuse me for missing the rest of the meeting. Again, you're in good hands and I'll catch up on the proceedings later tonight. Have a good night, everybody, thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Uh where were we? Somebody had their hand up.
I did.
Mr. Yoder.
Um on the first page, on line forty-eight. It says comprehensive plan replaces that original version and lays out the citizens' involvement. The city, the city's citizen involvement and um. It's not really replacing because we can't, we don't have it, so I just, it seems like it would flow better if it said. From line forty-seven, this chapter of the comprehensive plan replaces that original version. And then in parentheses, historical information is not available.
That, that's not accurate.
Well, where is it then? I couldn't find, I can't, I missed that one little page thing, but that's.
Yes, that's all, that's all it is, that's, that's what was adopted. That's all it was.
So it's just this, the C I, C I P that's missing.
Well, no, they called it, they said.
Was, no, that was.
That was the program, that was just exceedingly short. And it reads as if there's a separate, separate document, but I think if you really look at it carefully, it doesn't have to mean that. It's, it's just kind of referring, it's like somebody referring to themselves.
Yeah, I, I, I would like, I, when we talked about this before, I was there when we. Well, I wasn't there when they first adopted it, but that was what was in the comprehensive plan in the book. Was just that single page.
So I, I remember I was having a discussion last meeting about um, or maybe it was in some of the reading that we had. That the D L C D was contacted and you know, they'd had fires and they'd had floods and they had moving and there was no. Um documentation of, of our C I P. And even the city didn't have any, Chris said the city didn't have it um either. So you're saying that. There never was any for.
Chris, Chris was talking about that there wasn't anything. Just like Gary said, it kind of sounded like there could have been something else. And he checked back there from nineteen seventy-six or seventy-eight or whenever it was. Or no, it wasn't that far, yeah, it was that far back.
Seventy-six.
And there wasn't anything in the city and he checked with the state and they didn't have anything either.
So I think we can assume that there just wasn't anything and it was just that statement. But the plan was to involve citizens and that was all it was.
Okay, well then let's scratch that.
Anything else on page one and two? Page three?
Where's um? Oh, Haley said she couldn't make it, okay.
Commissioner Yoder.
On line um of page three, the policy two point five. It says um utilize community engagement methods, tools, technologies. Examples would include posting physical signs at future development locations. I would like to have it be a little bit more um. Worded in such a way kind of how Haley, how Haley originally when her on top three. Because it says um examples would include posting physical signs. I've seen some of the physical signs that we've used in the past, they're like yard signs, but. Oftentimes, they're so overgrown with grass that even. The one here on chapel, I walked right by it, walking, not driving and didn't see it. So she, she asked to have them be much larger, so I was wondering if maybe what you guys see, what you thought about. Posting physical signs that are easily seen by passing traffic. To maybe include that wording in there or else we might just continue to use these really small signs that just get covered up in grass.
I, I kind of view this comprehensive plan kind of like our constitution and then. The 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 code as our laws and rules that get changed a lot more frequently. And I I'm in favor of keeping this document fairly generic and goal oriented. And I think if we just say physical signs, it's clear that we mean something that's intended to be seen and then after.
By passing traffic?
And by, and then after this comprehensive plan is adopted, we can go on to put something in our, in our development code saying. You shall place a sign that is. This big by this big, and then if we find out that that's too small, it's easier to make it bigger. If we find out it's too small. Or not really what we intended, it's harder to change this document, so.
It is, so you, I'm not asking for any, uh, like Haley had originally, she had, you know, seven by ten, she had some dimensions that she. Take, had taken from King County. But just the wording that are easily seen by passing traffic, you think is too, um. Detailed.
Um, I I guess I don't have a strong feeling about it. I guess I feel like physical signs implies that they're easily seen and it's bad government if we require people to put signs that are easy to hide. I I just don't want to spend too much time chasing all those rabbits down all those holes in a document like this.
Well, if we just move on, we won't be chasing the rabbits quite so long.
Counselor Cause.
Um, I mentioned just just inserting the word prominent before physical signs.
I like that.
Well, whatever makes you happy, Gary.
No, whatever makes all of us happy.
So that prominent is good, prominent, prominent is not small and covered with grass.
I'm waiting for.
I like that, oh, yeah, you gotta have.
The same, the same policy two point five, I would like to have a brief discussion. On press releases. Um, I know that on one of my, uh, recommendations, my top three recommendations was actually a. Like an article that should be written, put in. You know, like the newspaper, um. Whereas a press release, if I remember correctly, is usually just a very short little statement. Um, to a any news media, it's not an article. You know, it's not, um, something that's been written, it actually tells a little bit of, gives a little bit more in depth of what's going on. It's so it's, I I would like, um. Maybe we could think of a better way instead of calling it a press release of of having it be. Short concise articles that will be informative for people. Instead of a press release, because unless I'm wrong about how the wording of press release, but I think that's what a press release is, it's. Is like, there's a planning commission meeting, Marle. That's kind of like a press release. But if it's a story about what's going on in the town, that might be of interest, something that's a planning commission is working on. It would be a little bit more detailed, I could be just, you know.
Commissioner Bernardino.
Well, I would argue that, again, this is. This is. The press releases is in a sentence just saying, here are some examples that include blah, blah, blah. And right after press releases, it says, and other practices to increase engagement, which I think would be. Would cover, you know, if you wanted a column in the paper or something like that.
It would be another practice.
I think going back to what Gary was saying about sort of keeping this somewhat. We want it to be thorough enough to have everything we. Need, but I don't know that we need to go down to the. The level of specific. Specific method, we need. We need a framework here that says, will we be utilizing the press? Basically. I don't know that it matters that much that we narrow it down to how we use them, I think it's clear we should use the local paper. In some way or form, whether it's press releases or columns or taking out an ad or whatever. I feel like that maybe should be more later in the, in the code changes. If we wanted to include it there.
Okay, we could shoot, we could shoot for that.
I don't know, to me, this, this is specific enough, I think.
I'm, I'm cool, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Anything else? Page three, page four? I've got something on page four. Um, it just kind of stopped me up when I was reading, um, line thirty-four. The planning commission will hold at least one meeting to evaluate the effectiveness on an annual basis. I would just revise that to say the planning commission will hold at least one meeting annually to evaluate the effectiveness. Just put. Put the one and the annual closer together. Again, not a big deal, it's just, I had to kind of go back when I was reading it to comprehend what it was saying.
Where, where, what line is that on?
Thirty-four.
Oh, oh, on that one, I, is it the planning commission or is, when we're talking about evaluating? The citizen involvement plan, is it, I mean, it it is the planning commission, but. Is it more appropriate to say the C C I there?
I, I believe that's like probably a typo putting that it says planning commission instead of the C C I.
Well, since they're the same thing, it means the same thing, but I agree that it's. That you could change, if you make it C C I, then if you change, if if someday we add that body, then you don't have to change the language.
I mean, I mean. Technically, I mean, it would be, you're right, the planning commission. In that instance, though, is where the C C I, we're, you know, acting in that. On that purpose.
I agree.
I guess.
Yeah, so. I agree that it's better to make it the C C I, because down in the middle of the paragraph, it says the C C I will advise the city council, so. So it should be the C C I.
So tell, tell me how you wrote that other one, the rest of that.
Um, will hold at least one meeting annually. And then on the next line, strike on an annual basis. It also could say one annual meeting.
No, I I I like how you said it.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that on policy four-three on page four. That we changed, uh, the first sentence. To read the. C C I will hold at least one meeting annually. To evaluate the effect, effectiveness of the citizen involvement program. To help guide recommendations for program and policy improvements.
Okay. Do we have a second?
My second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 That's unanimous. Are there any other comments?
Did we add the word prominent with a? Motion? The prominent physical signs.
Oh. We didn't actually vote, I don't think, did we?
I don't believe we did.
Yeah. Okay. Well. Commissioner Rose, I think that was the perfect entree for your first motion on the City Fulhameth Planning Commission.
I move that we add the word prominent on line. Line thirty-six, posting prominent physical signs at the future development locations.
Line thirty-six, page.
Three.
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 I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. And raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
unanimous again? Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
I was just going to, um, ask Commissioner Sullivan. If on page four, the policy four-one, which I believe includes some of his recommendations. Um, on his top three. Recommendations that he have, if that fulfills. What he, his intent was.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Peggy. I guess the way I look at this is. It's, we already knew that we were supposed to be the city committee for citizen involvement. And, uh, while we didn't have, you know, these pages to detail what exactly that meant. We did have the state guidelines saying what the citizen involvement committee was supposed to do. And, um. See, it wasn't last year, I guess it was two years ago. We, we started doing some things, which are basically in keeping with this document that we have here, we started doing some making recommendations and trying to promote better. Citizen understanding of what's going on in the city government. And there was a lot of kickback, a lot of, how dare you, and that's not your privilege and that sort of thing. And that's kind of where this discussion came out of. Um, what we have here, as Gary said, it's a little bit like a. Constitution. And all, all it really does in my mind is kind of reinforce the fact that we are. It within our, our rights and responsibilities to make those kinds of recommendations, that the exact details feel like, um. They're probably. Going to be fleshed out in the future as far as what we actually do with, with this. Um, but I I do feel like this document has a reasonable job of saying, uh, by the way, the citizen involvement committee is supposed to. Be helping make sure the citizens are involved and informed, and it's okay that we do that. And then my hope is that, um, when we, when we have this meeting in the future and we reevaluate, yeah, how is the city website working? We're left with a little bit more of a free hand to actually say some things without getting slapped down quite so hard.
I agree completely, because it'll, it'll be the right time and I really like the idea, the this thing of having the annual meeting, so it kind of forces the conversation every year. So that you don't end up having, uh, planning commission members who don't really understand what. What's being asked of us completely. So, uh. To make the question more pointed, are, are you completely happy with all the words there in four point one? Would you make any, you, you missed the last meeting, the big opportunity, I, it's amazing that this thing came together as well as it did in that one meeting. But I think the city of, because the city of Dallas had a lot of good stuff for us to te, uh, steal.
I think I'm, I think I'm completely happy with this, um. I. I wish we had something like this, or at least, uh. Uh, an alignment on a concept like this, a couple of years ago, I feel like would have simplified things.
Yeah.
There, there wasn't really clear communication and when, when it was called out, um. I feel like there wasn't a lot of sympathy for it. You know, there were things that just weren't getting shared and. It was just really unfortunate and so, but I'm, I I do feel like this, uh, emphasizes what we all really believed in our hearts to be true anyway. And my hope is just that second time around. You know, people listen to us.
Yeah. Commissioner Bernardino.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Do a little shout out to whoever actually compiled this. Um, because I, I was really happy with it when I read it, I thought it did a great job of synthesizing. All those various plans with all of our changes and so I don't know who did the actual. Legwork of putting that together, but thank you to whoever did it, because I think they did a great job.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Probably Ruth, but.
That's what I figured, but.
With post.
I think Chris was involved too, but I, but I also want to say that it was the, the planning commission. Except for Joseph, he wasn't there. I I think we, it surprisingly fell together pretty well, almost in this forum in that meeting, it was a very productive meeting.
I, I do have one small thing. And I don't know if it'll take a motion, but you were talking about the policy four point one. It is, I think the, what's in there is correct, but in, in terms of. I guess you would say differences. I'm, I'm looking at it like there, there should be. Three paragraphs in it or three sentences. If it's actually only paragraphs, because, because it's first, the first line, it says, establish clear rights and responsibilities, the applicant, decision maker staff. Other participant, participants of planning projects and issues and this decision-making processes, boy, I can't talk. But then it, then it jumps to. Communication be sweaty between city bodies should be documented and addressed, da, da, da. And then it jumps to city officials will be responsive to questions for the public. And in my mind. Those, they're, they're three separate things and they are. You know, rights and responsibilities, but it, I guess, in my mind, I'd rather they were. In three different paragraphs, all under the policy four point one. But just, I don't know. It, it makes it stand out, each one of those. Rights and responsibilities to the different groups. Or the, I don't know. I, it's, I mean, I know it's kind of. You know, out there a little bit, but. It just seems. That you notice it more, I guess it stands out more.
Okay, can I make a motion in?
Can I ask one question first? Did you say, did you say three paragraphs or four?
Well, there'd be three. The, I mean, essentially, it's.
Because there's, there's four.
One sentence. Yeah, one sentence and then two sentences. And then one sentence. So.
Right, got it. Yeah, Commissioner Yoder, you can make a motion, well. Commissioner Bernardino, do you have a comment there first?
Yeah, just, I was struck a little bit by why? Why does it say that communication between city bodies should be documented and addressed? But then city officials will be responsive to questions. I feel like. Either they should all be shoulds or they should all be wills.
A will, by you.
Commissioner Sullivan, you have your hand up.
I, I agree with that, uh. What Joanna said, they should all be shoulds, they should all be wills, just for kind of consistency, plus I'm a little bit picky that way. Um, as far as why we do that, uh, we had a problem in twenty nineteen where the planning commission got together and. We made a motion to give something to the city council, we said, city council, here's a recommendation from you. And we passed it, it was a motion that went in the minutes and so, um, I was chair at the time, so I wrote up, uh. Uh, the, the wording that we had agreed to tell the city council and I signed it and I sent it off to the city manager. And we never heard anything back and, uh, we never really, weren't sure why, it just seemed like, oh, maybe they didn't really care about it. At the end of the year, I did a freedom of information request and found out that the mayor at the time had. Uh, been urged by the city manager to not actually share. Uh, our information with the city council. And so they never got it. So I, when I saw this, I was really glad that it was in here because it's important that. The bodies communicate with each other, the city council certainly doesn't have to. Agree with the things that we recommend, but, uh, if they don't even hear it, that's kind of a problem.
Yeah.
I agree.
So, um. So do we want to go with should or will?
We could mash, mash up and do shall.
Actually, I, I absolutely prefer that by a long ways because that's probably the most appropriate word for this document. Should is a suggestion, will is a prediction of the future and shall is, you're supposed to do this, so I like shall.
I like shall.
I like.
And the city attorney hopefully will tell us what we really should say.
Well, uh, it's our, uh, office's policy that we're more preferential to, uh, will or things that, that are a command. Versus shall sometimes also has a, uh. It's not always as mandatory in some contexts as it is in others, so we've been shifting to will, there are uses of both in here, this is your document. So we have our preferences, this is gonna be, this is your document though, so it's up to you guys what you want to do. Uh, the minutes would also reflect whether you want, that it would be more of a mandatory thing. If that makes sense.
Will.
So will is more. Commanding than shall, is what you're saying.
Right, because when you're saying it's predicting the future, it's more of a, it's going to happen in the future.
Oh. Okay.
Right, so the city will do this or the commission will do this. So that way there's no ambiguity. So that way there's no ambiguity of when it's going to happen either at the same time that it it it. We've run into issues where in the context of the of the clause, the shall, it doesn't imply when it's happening, it just, it'll happen eventually in the ether. Versus will with in other contexts makes it so that it's how it has to happen. And there's more of a an endpoint on that.
So question. Under that lens, I didn't do a document search to look up every time it says shall or will or should. So if I were to have done that, I wonder how many shells would have jumped out.
A quick search says it's about seventeen, but that's for the entire packet. I'm looking at this now. It's definitely at least ten. Like I said, this is your document. It doesn't have to be like that. That's just our preference when we're doing legal writing. And the minutes again would reflect that it's it's a mandatory, it's not permissive, it's it's going to happen.
Should we go back and try and picked out the shells? Because even on the first page on thirty six, the planning commission shall function. So I guess sometimes it would make sense or 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 not to replace shells with wills, but I don't think we can put a blanket a request out that all shells be replaced with wills without
Right.
Going over the document carefully.
That's just our office's preference. If you wanted to go back, we could take a recess if you wanted to do that and just kind of look it over and see if anyone had any particular things that they wanted to do. If not, it is something that could be amended again in the future, but it would involve a cop plan amendment if we ran into issues with that. I can't predict the future in that way. Just doing a brief look, it's more of statements of things that will happen. For so for instance, this particular one on page four where it says shall conduct a survey at least every two years. There's some context in there that says when it's supposed to be happening.
So this is, we're just making a recommendation to the city council, the city council could could take that on if if they chose to change that language and then they wouldn't have to be a another comprehensive plan amendment, correct?
Right. So when you present, this would be the recommendation city council, if city councils wanted to come in and change it, they would be able to, because again, it's a recommendation. Once the city passes the amendment to the cop planet, it becomes like the final amendment. That's when it goes back to the state for approval.
Okay.
So it's not going from planning to the state, back to city council to the state.
Right, okay, thank you.
However, I've heard city council members that they like it when we deal with things as exhaustively as we can before it gets to them because they have plenty of things to do.
Point taken.
They don't want to be dealing with our typos and stuff. Let's just.
I
Well, I I guess we could take a little break and each of us take a section and see if there's anything that stands out with the shell.
I can tell you right now that it looks like all of them are on page, except for this one on page four. They are on pages, the bottom of page one, under the section citizen involvement and philanthropy. And they all end by the next section going forward. So they're all in that one section citizen involvement and philanthropy starting on page one.
And what did you say about going forward?
That's when it ends. There's nothing past that except for the one on page four that we just were addressing.
So it's mostly on page two, those one, two, three, four, five?
Right. And then there's three up in that first paragraph on page, uh, line, page one, line thirty six and line forty two.
Yeah.
Right, the planning commission shall function or the planning commission will function?
So again, that's where it comes in in terms of what is the context of here? We understand that the planning commission is going to be the only body right now that's functioning as the CCI. When you say will, it makes it very clear that there until this is amendment amended, this particular language, only the planning commission is going to be functioning as the CCI.
Okay.
I'm reading these real quick, like, like the one, two, three, four, five. Most of them in the first three words, it's the third word is shall. And I mean, I don't see any instances of shall in here that it wouldn't be completely fine to change all those to will. I mean, I don't think it matters a lot, but I'm not afraid of doing that if somebody wants to.
Well. So you're asking for a motion?
I'm I'm suggesting that I'm not, I don't have a strong opinion about any of it. So if somebody wants to make a motion, feel free.
Okay. I make a motion that the the words shall be replaced with the word will throughout the document. I also make it want to include that that on policy four point one that there will be line spaces.
Well, can can we deal with those separately?
Okay, sure.
So we've had a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
I.
And I believe that was unanimous. Okay, continue.
Okay, I I make a motion to let add line space on policy four point one. After the word possesses, which is on line twenty two. Processes, I'm sorry, yes, processes and before the word communication. And then on line twenty five, after the word meetings and the word city officials.
Would you, would you also consider online twenty between responsibilities and established? Because those that first sentence writes and responsibilities is kind of heading for for the remainder of those.
Yes. Let's have that one too then, just a space.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of changing page four, line twenty, policy four point one to make it rights and responsibilities as the header followed by three paragraphs of one sentence, two sentences and one sentence. One favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is also unanimous.
So I have a question.
Yes.
The, we we talked about the shells, the what about the shoulds? There to line twenty three and line twenty four. Were we addressing those also? That's where it sort of started.
Wait.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
Um. Yes, thank you. Are there, how many shoulds are there in the document?
Looking at just the draft that we're working on right now. It looks like there's one on page page two, line five, the report should incorporate both quantitative and qualitative measures of citizen involvement efforts. And then looking at page four on line four and five in that sec, in that sentence workshop town hall type meetings should be held facility informal communications and public hearing should be held facilitate formal communications. And then one more instance or two more instances on lines twenty three and twenty four on page four. And just for like legal clarification, should is the permissive. So when we're looking at, should we change shoulds to wills? We're just, that becomes a mandatory, it becomes an imposition on what you're going to be required to do when you're fulfilling the the duties of the cop plant that the cop plant opposes on you. So for instance, if we look at the line, page two, line five, where it says the CCI shall make an annual written report to the city's council. If you're going to change that should, then you're going to be putting a mandatory requirement that is going to need to be within that report. Should just becomes the, that would be the goal is that we're including these things versus we have to have it in there.
Yeah, do we want to, do we want to make that?
You know.
So in submit.
Yeah, I don't think it causes any problems to change any of those to will.
Except that, like the attorney said, will as you will.
Well, are there any of those that we don't think that's okay?
Well, we don't currently do workshop town hall meetings, do we? No, I mean, perhaps we, but if we change that to will, we're putting ourselves on the on the line to do it.
Which line is that?
I'm sorry, on page four, line four. Page four, line four.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, I I guess you could always do a Zoom workshop.
Well.
It's been difficult to do that kind of thing in the last two years.
I I will, I will say that that it does not describe a frequency, so that softens it a little bit. And the I I believe we do have, we have had a number of workshop meetings, both in the city council and the planning commission and other committees regarding a number of issues where we have taken public testimony.
So I think in this particular case, it's more of just a descriptor in terms of what is considered an informal communication versus a formal communication. I don't think that particular section needs to be a should or a will or anything, sorry, a will as a mandatory. It 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 seems more like it's guidance in that particular situation.
Yeah. So I'll ask the question the other way is, does anybody think that any of the shoulds really need to be changed to wills?
Well, the one that started this whole thing, like Darlene said, on line twenty three of page four should be documented that it which should have been changed will, but it should instead of shall. So I guess that would be a standalone. We need to make that should.
About about lines twenty three and twenty four, both of those shoulds changed to wills.
Yes.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hunsicker, you had something to say?
I would, I was going to say just what you did, but I guess I was going to add after the should on twenty four is also necessary. I I guess I'd say take that out. So I'll make a motion to to on page four, policy four point one, line twenty three and twenty four. Change the shoulds to will. And then also take out also after this second should on twenty four.
Okay. Do we have a second?
A second debt.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Are there any other of the shoulds that anybody feels strongly about?
There's only one other should. It's on page two, line five. That's regarding the report.
Okay. Any other comments? So we've had a number of modifications.
I got it. Yes, I do. I do have one. I'm sorry. And I was part of the time I've been reading about all those wills. I guess I'm looking at number on page one. And we've made this change on page one, line forty two. And and maybe it doesn't make any difference, but it says the council now it says will set the parameters and makeup of the CACs and will endeavor to include a representative cross section. I guess if you endeavor, that's kind of
Yeah.
It's not nothing. I mean, it's kind of like, well, you give it a try.
Shall endeavor and will endeavor mean the same thing because of the word endeavor.
Right. So I and I I I think endeavor is an appropriate word there, so maybe it doesn't really matter. I was thinking, oh, maybe that shouldn't be there because at first, when I read it, it was saying you will have a cross section. But the chances of that happening necessarily is would be pretty hard to do.
And that that's hard to mandate and it's hard to measure.
Right. So even though it says will, it will endeavor, like you said, it's either way, it's the same thing. Okay, so I'm done.
Okay. So with that, we have a motion on the floor to adopt this document, chapter one, citizen involvement. We've had a number of modifications proposed and accepted, passed through motions. I will now, we can now vote all in favor of adoption of chapter one, citizen involvement. The comprehensive plan as amended. Favor, raise your hand and say aye. Thank you. That's unanimous.
Jenna's happy.
Yes. So I I do have a little more on my script here. Any participant not satisfied with this decision may appeal to the state land use board of appeals within twenty one days of the date of the decision, but I don't think that's applicable here because we're just recommending that it go to the city council. So I think that's all I need to say. And
We're supposed to have a staff update. I know that there's no no staff here, but I would like to suggest that we have written staff updates for for times such as this where there isn't any staff to give us updates that we actually have something. I know there's been times when some of us have been surprised about some of the things that are going on in the city, but.
I think this is the first meeting in a long time that we haven't had a written staff update of some sort.
But but there isn't one and there is no staff to update us that maybe we suggest that we
I
a little more.
Going forward for the next several months, we're having two meetings per month.
Right.
I would be okay with one written staff update per month. I don't want to put too much on city staff. That makes sense to you too, Peggy, or?
Long as, long as we get one.
I'm, yeah, I'm I'm fine with one a month, unless somebody has a different opinion.
Have we heard anything about Patrick? Like, well, I guess we did two weeks ago, so.
Two weeks ago, yeah. He still wasn't doing that well. For since that came up and for Commissioner Rose's benefit, our city planner had some injuries that he's kind of struggling through and waiting for a rest to heal enough to be able to type and come back to work and all that, so. City staff has been taking on some additional responsibilities that has been an issue. Our next meeting. Um, our next meeting is um, February first. Um, where we are going to be. Discussing the housing chapter, um, you know, the original schedule had us deliberating and recommending on this chapter next week, but. But uh, we got through that. And we've passed that off to the city council now. So next week is discussing a policy discussion on this, on the housing chapter, which uh, I look forward to, it could be interesting. So we'll see what, uh, see what comes at us at that point.
Does um. Darlene, do you have a? Do you have the housing chapter?
Well, I think so, I got a big notebook, so I'm assuming.
Oh, well, you might not be in that then.
I'll double check.
Okay.
But what exists, what exists so far is a. Housing needs report, I'm gonna get that title wrong, I think. Analysis that was um, completed last year and is available on the website. If you want to do some homework, if anyone wants to do some homework. And then um. And then there's, I, I believe there's something in the existing comprehensive plan. Um, but I expect we'll have significant revisions and um. Hopefully we'll have some time with city staff to prepare some thoughts about um, some things going forward and maybe, maybe pull together some other examples. Again, like was done with citizens involvement, but uh, we'll have to see what develops here in the next couple of weeks.
I just wanted to say to let Darlene know that um, even though it's on the website, it's, you know. It's pretty wordy, so if you prefer to read paper like I do, I always ask for a hard copy and Ruth always, you know. Just gives me a hard copy and I go in and take, taste, take it from the desk, so you can always request a hard copy, it's much easier to read.
That's great, I am definitely a paper person, so.
Yeah, me too, so.
Is very good to be able to look back and forth, so yeah, you should ask Ruth.
A lot of color and for those of us that don't have, don't have color printers, it's nice to get a good copy.
Uh, Commissioner Hunsicker.
Well, if I recall correctly. We actually, we did uh, back when we went through the housing analysis. We also did get the policy things, but we didn't deal anything with that. If you remember right, there was, those were the things that were on, you know, they had blue headings and such like that. With it, I assume they'll send us another set, but uh, I'm pretty sure that's all this. Housing policy discussion would be about is those, those items. There was each one of them had, you know, five or six or ten pages.
Interesting to hear what you were gonna say, Commissioner Sullivan.
Uh, I was just driving my face, sorry.
Well, I, I, I would encourage everyone to um. Do some homework on the issue, maybe look at some other things, I think this is one area where we have the opportunity to, uh, to do something interesting here. I'm not, I'm not too awful hopeful of, of, for myself to come up with some creative wonderful language to help our city grow well. But uh, I think together we can, we can make something better than anybody individually, so if somebody's feels motivated. Feel free to um, color outside the lines a little bit on this one, I know it's a, a hot topic and, and um. And I guess I would, if there's anybody listening, you know, definitely looking forward to public input. And um, Counselor Cosi, if, if there's been any discussions or thoughts or anything from anybody, I think. Now would be a really appropriate time for people to be feeding some information to city staff. Regarding ideas of what should be in, included in this chapter. The earlier you start talking about things, the, the more influence you have, so welcome that very much.
I would agree, I intend to reach out to Chris and see, uh, clarify what you'll actually be provided to work with. Because the housing needs analysis is really, as I understand it, is a reference document.
Right.
So um, I don't know if you're gonna be provided with a draft chapter or if you're gonna be given the old chapter to revise. How this is gonna work, but it seems like it might be helpful to give all of you a little more direction.
Agreed, agreed. Um, I might um, send an email. Kind of requesting some information come at us prior to the meeting. Um, it, it always does in the packet, but maybe even earlier than that, just to kind of describe the process, yeah, Commissioner Hunsicker.
I, I'm looking at this, I assume that's what you looked at, the updated planning commission schedule.
Yeah.
After seeing, like when you said on February first, we wouldn't be doing the citizen involvement deliberation or recommendation. Cause we just had the hearing, this whole thing is kind of. Off. If you'll notice on February first, it says housing chapter, policy discussion. And then the twenty-second of public hearing and March first deliberation and recommendation.
Yeah.
Uh, and it's backwards on all those items. I mean, in my mind, it should be policy discussion, deliberation and recommendation, public hearing.
But we, we have to, we have to have our public hearing before we can make a recommendation to city council.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, you're right, okay.
So, yeah, so the policy discussion is really our recommendations of the draft that gets a public hearing.
Yeah, okay, alright, alright.
And, and we've laid it out that way so that we, if we do have significant public input, we have time to. Deal with it and go back to the drawing board and if we really, you know, this, this citizen involvement came together really well. It'll be wonderful if all these other chapters come together that well, but I'm not gonna hold my breath.
Gotcha, yeah, you're, you're right, I'm, I'm sorry, I was looking at it wrong.
No, that's alright, that's alright. Uh, any other questions? Any other questions? Uh, Commissioner Rose?
No, I, I feel like my toes are barely wet and I'm, you know, there's a lot to absorb. So I, I hope to get up to speed soon, so.
Yeah, that's great, we, we've all been here a number of years and maybe we're ankles wet or knees maybe, but. Ruth.
Um, I just wanted to say great job on the citizens involvement committee document, very good.
Yeah, I, I, yes, thank you, and I, I look forward to putting some of it into practice and seeing what we can do to actually get people engaged.
You will.
Yes, we will, won't we? Okay, thank you all, meaning endured.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys, good night everybody.
Good night.